I'd like to call the Cumberland School Committee meeting to order at 7:32 and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Denon. Second by Mr. Duffy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries six zero with Mrs. Teal absent this evening. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Approval of minutes, the regular meeting two twenty-five, executive session two twenty-five, enrollment report from three-one, school police report of two-one, residency truancy report of three-one. Pleasure of the committee on the consent agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Salvatore?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion?
I'm sure.
Mr. Demodica.
I guess this would be addressed to our superintendent. I'm seeing that there's a large increase of investigations in regards to students. Are we getting a jump in this? More people coming in? I mean, we have fifty-three that were referred for investigations to see if they are residents in the town.
I'm sorry.
This is on the truancy report? That, you know, this last month, fifty-three recommendations to be looked at?
I'm assuming, Mr. Demodica, that you're referring to students, either students who have truancy problems, or is that what you're referring to?
Well, this one says that the attendance, fifty-three people, fifty-three, is that a lot for us now compared to previous months?
That could very well be. The only question I have is, I'm not sure if that would also include the visits that he makes to homes regarding residency issues, and that may not be. But certainly, I can look into that and get some more information for you, Mr. Demodica. I will do that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries six zero. Next item is report out of executive session meeting on three-ten, two thousand sixteen. There were no votes taken, and I need a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fiorello, second by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries six zero. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Mr. Mitchell.
Madam Chair, could you join me down at the podium?
You bet.
Tess, come stand over here, Grace. This past Saturday, we had a very special competition, and it's something that we have done, I believe, for at least the last four years, and that was the Sedexo Future Chef Competition. And it's really a pretty impressive and well-organized function. And this year, Shauna Spillane, our new manager from Sedexo, organized this event. And we had eight students participate in the competition. And the eight students are actually paired with chefs while students prepare the food that they submitted to be considered for this competition. And the food is rated on several different criteria, and they are originality, kid-friendly, ease of preparation, healthy attributes, plate presentation, and of course, taste. And it was, as I mentioned, it was really well-organized. There were several judges. I was a judge. Mr. Fiorello was a judge. Mrs. Sarah, the principal of BF Norton, Mrs. Malcolm, the principal of Cumberland Hill, were also judges. And it was, it's a pretty sophisticated process that you go through to judge the food that the students prepare. Well, Grace Iannuzzi was the winner of the competition. This is Grace, so congratulations. And Grace is a fourth-grade student at Cumberland Hill. And we had a chance to talk a little bit during the competition, and she is really impressive, young lady, very articulate, and really, really, I think, was really thoughtful in the food that she prepared, because it's not just preparing something that's really tasty and good to eat. The point is that it needs to be healthy. So she was really conscientious about making sure that not only was what she prepared tasty, but it was also nutritious. So we were actually fighting over who was going to get to eat the most of what Grace produced on that morning, but she really did a nice job.
I won.
And, yeah, yeah. Mr. Fiorello, you know, loved it. She really did a nice job, and Grace has won three out of the last four years of the competition, so she's really good at this. So on behalf of the school committee, Grace, congratulations. We have something for you. Congratulations, Grace.
I just wanted to point out that the mayor was also present and was a judge.
Thank you. I apologize. That's important. Madam Chair, I have two other things that I would like to share with you that I thought that the committee and the audience would be interested in hearing about. And the high school has organized a, what is called a CHS game club, and they have two advisors, Melissa Schenk and Eric Giorgio, two teachers at the high school, who've organized this really cool game club. And I had a conversation with Mr. Tornero about this, and he said, you know, Bob, you've got to come see this. So last Wednesday, I went over to the high school with him, and there were approximately seventy-five students that were, and administrators, and teachers who were involved in these games. And they were like, they were doing a lot of the old, different kinds of board games. They were also playing ping pong, and there were actually several teachers involved in the ping pong competition. So it was a really nice, fun afternoon, and clearly, everyone was having a great time. So, you know, I think it just emphasizes the fact, and what we've talked a lot about it, how interested students are in gaming and technology and that sort of thing. So it really was fun, and it's been really well-attended. And I want to thank publicly Ms. Schenk and Mr. Giorgio for organizing this event for students on a regular basis. And I think it attracts a unique group of students who might not be involved in other things in the school. So I just wanted to, it was so impressive, I just wanted to share that with all of you. And the other thing that I wanted to mention was, we have been starting to plan what we hope to do this summer, a computer science boot camp. As you know, in fact, you may have heard about this, the initiative that the governor has started regarding a statewide computer science curriculum, and this really fits in nicely with that. We want to provide opportunities for students during the summer, and what better way to engage them in something meaningful and educational than a summer computer science boot camp? So we, several teachers and administrators, Mr. Demona has been a part of this as well, we are starting to plan how we could possibly, over the course of the summer, we don't, not exactly sure how long that would be, provide opportunities for students at, definitely, you know, at the high school, but we're also talking about providing some opportunities for elementary and middle school students as well. But we're pretty excited about this, and I think we have teachers who are willing to help us over the summer. So just wanted to share that with you as well.
Mr. Salvatore.
That's great to hear about the game club. I mean, I think it gives students a chance to let out a little bit of steam and relax. Is that how Mr. Demona hurt his foot? Was he playing ping pong and being competitive, or?
He was playing one of the video games.
Any other questions for Mr. Mitchell? So, Mr. Mitchell, just on the game club, are they playing, because gaming in my generation might be different than gaming with kids, but are they playing board games as well?
They're playing video games and board games. I think that, you know, there were some students playing chess and those kinds of things as well. But I wouldn't, you know, if you have an opportunity to check it out, I mean, it really is, it's really interesting to see students and teachers and administrators all participating. There were a few, I was pretty impressed with the level of skill by some of the teachers playing ping pong, I must say. And Mr. Costa was enjoying himself playing video games. So it was, and the students, I think, enjoy that collaboration as well. That's a good thing. It's fun. It was fun. They were having a lot of fun, and I wanted to share that with you.
Yeah, and I'm a board game hoarder, but now that the kids have kind of grown up, maybe they'd like some donations, because I know I have like Chinese checkers and all that silly stuff, so. Pardon? And then the computer science boot camp, Mr. Mitchell, I would just say if you are looking to have community members volunteer for something like that, I'm sure we could rustle some up. I know there's a lot of folks who have expressed an interest in participating in that type of venue.
We would love to do that, and, you know, it's, I'm glad that you mentioned that, because I know that a teacher, I don't know if it's a teacher at Garvin or a teacher at Community, I just got an email about this within the last week or so, a parent and his daughter are going to be doing a presentation on computer safety, you know, cyber safety. So really nice, you know, nice of them to do that, and it's nice to see Dad and his daughter, a ten-year-old daughter, doing the presentation together. I believe it's at Community, and I have it on my calendar, it's a six o'clock.
There's one at Garvin and one at Community School.
Yeah, he's doing multiple sessions.
Yeah.
Oh, excellent.
Maybe he'd like to provide one to us as well. You know, I think that's an option. Awesome. Okay, next item is chairperson's report, school-town collaboration. I have nothing this evening, although I will say that we will have the town council's school committee meeting in March, and we're including the budget task force members. They have requested that we provide a presentation, or that they provide their presentation, right? And I think the tentative date on that is the twenty-third, and when I get a minute, I'll pull up the date on my, it is the twenty-third, so I would imagine that would be at the library.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Salvatore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is the task force, Mr. Duffy, is the task force report going to be out before this joint meeting between the town council and school committee?
Potentially. It's still being finalized at this point, but I think that maybe. I will talk to the group, but I think that they really wanted to have the chance to give it to both groups at the same time as well, just so that one group didn't have a chance to dig deep into stuff and the other group didn't. I think if we're going to make it available, we make it available to all, both the school and the town side, if we're going to do that. But I know they're still working on completing it this time, but I'll talk to the group about it. Not that they want to keep it hidden, but I think if we give it to one, we should give it to everyone as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is report of standing committees' payment of bills. Mr. Fiorello, Mr. Demodica, sorry.
Madam Chair, fiscal did meet upstairs tonight. We had some questions for Mr. Pignano on the bills, and I would make a motion that we approve payment of the bills of one million, sixteen thousand, seven hundred, sixty-three dollars and forty-one cents.
Mr. Demodica moves passage of the payment of bills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Denon. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries six zero.
Madam Chair, we did meet over some other items. Sedexo came in again, gave us a nice monthly report. They are working on the overdue balances that some of the groups owe us for lunch, and so she is working on that to get us collected. Couple of other items we will be discussing tonight is buying science kits that we currently lease. Will be going out to, if we approve it tonight, purchase, instead of leasing the science kits, doing some work at Ashton-Garvin Community Schools to repair some controls and sensors on the heat. We talked about security bollards at the schools, and we're going to get some more information about that. And Mr. Chandler gave us a presentation about upgrading our phone system district-wide. Currently, the only company that gave us the bid was Cox Communications, and Mr. Pignano said they will budget that for next year. That was it.
Next item on the agenda is policy and procedures. Mr. Fiorello.
Madam Chair, we did meet on Tuesday night. We discussed three items, one being the high school athletic and extracurricular eligibility requirements, which will come before us for a vote a little later on in the agenda. Basically, it was just cleaning up some of the policy language. We also are reviewing the student suspension policy, which is not ready, it's been tabled for a future meeting. We're just trying to try to instill more of a, progressive, thank you, Mr. Mitchell, progressive discipline, instead of such a punishing discipline right off the bat. So, and of course, our big item of the night was our transgender policy, which we have finally settled on language. It passed on a three-to-o vote, and it'll be coming up later for a first reading.
Thank you. And achievement and communications subcommittee update. Mrs. Teal is not here this evening, so just very briefly, we went over curriculum mapping with Mr. Demona, and this is an opportunity for us to roadmap all of the, Mr. Demona, can you give us a ten-cent tour on it, because I know I'm going to toss it right off the edge?
Sure, no problem, Madam Chair. So the curriculum mapping initiative is really about identifying what our curriculum looks like within a specific grade level, including all of the content that is covered within a grade level, but also how it spans K-12. So we really want to have a platform, a one-stop, efficient platform for our district to be able to identify what it is we're teaching, what are the essential skills and the enduring knowledge skills that we're teaching, what are the essential standards that we're hitting, you know, aligned to the common core, and then how we are assessing those, and what this mapping initiative and process does. And by the way, the teachers did an amazing job at our professional development session with this. It is a constant revision process where we're consistently and constantly looking at what it is that we're teaching, making sure that we're doing right by the students. So it's really about putting in a process, and that process is about refining, refining what we teach.
Thank you. Any questions? And then finally, budget task force update. Mr. Duffy?
Only update is the group, is the community volunteers is working to tighten up their presentation to be made to the joint school committee, town council at this time.
Thank you. And next item is comments from the public. Anyone here wish to speak this evening? And we'll have a hearing on the policy, so if folks want to speak specifically to the policy, we'll have a hearing around that. Yes? Hi. You might want to turn the podium, it's up to you.
Hi, my name is Sherry Mears, and I am here representing the Cumberland girls hockey team. My daughter's a junior this year. I'm here also with some other parents and athletes representing the team, and we're requesting that the girls' team be funded within the athletic budget for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen season. Our team is a varsity sport, and it should be recognized by the school as a varsity sport. We have demonstrated commitment and continued interest in the program, which shows evidence that we are worth the investment. The girls have grown up knowing and playing hockey and should have the same opportunities as the boys. Last year, we had to pay over fourteen thousand dollars out of pocket, and this was a combination of booster club and our own personal money to allow our girls to play. This is a huge financial burden on such a small team. Our girls compete interscholastically in the state, and the schools should fund their program like other varsity programs. Last year, we had, in the end, we had twelve girls from the Cumberland High School join the team. We attracted other girls, which had never actually played hockey before, but felt this was a great opportunity to try a new sport, and we feel that's a very positive thing for the school. In addition, we have a senior who's moving on, and she's also going to play in college, Cassidy Samansky, and that's another great win for the school. Next year, we expect around seven to eight girls from the Cumberland High School to participate on the team. You know, we want our girls to be recognized, just like the other sports in the town, in the school, the high school. You know, we are part of the co-op program with Lincoln and Mount, as you know, and because of this combination, it is a great to bring the three schools together, because it has allowed a lot more girls to be able to participate, and there has been able to produce a little bit of a, somewhat of a JV team as well, so that we can continue to grow and develop the girls and get them ready for varsity, or have some experience to play a sport that they either grew up with and they love, or a new sport that they'd like to try. So I know we've come here in the past, and we continue to come and ask for your attention to this and consideration for the budget planning for next year, and I don't know, you don't need to comment, I guess, but we wanted to know what next steps we could do to be strongly considered for the budget for two thousand sixteen, seventeen.
Is there anything else that we want to add? Just my group, make sure I cover all the points that we wanted to make. So, thank you for your time. Next item is public hearing, reading of policies. Mr. Fiorello, I'll turn this over to you.
First policy would be J-7 student suspension. Like I said earlier, that policy was actually tabled for a future meeting, so there will be no reading at this time. I-16, high school athletic and extracurricular eligibility requirements, does need to be read into the, read into the record. Again, that was just, that was removing all of the social privilege suspension part of that policy, because it's going to be included in the actual student suspension policy. And of course, we have our first reading of J-23, policy affecting students who identify as transgender or gender non-conforming. So I'd just like those read into the record, please.
Okay, thank you. And is anyone here to speak on any of these policies this evening? Yes? If you want to come up to the microphone, thank you.
I'm a junior at Beacon Charter High School. I used to go to Cumberland High School my freshman year, and I live in South Cumberland. When the policy being presented to you tonight was in its early stages, my mom came to me, and she said that the subcommittee writing it wanted us to read it and see if it would be suitable for the town schools, as she is an educator and I am, well, me. So I did, and I'm really excited, especially in light of recent events with our neighbors at Mount, that this policy has been written. And the policy that you're reviewing today came to me because I came out as transgender the summer before I started at Cumberland High School, because my mom is well-known in the town. A lot of families also know me, and becoming a teenager was hard enough with my business pretty much being known by everyone. It didn't help that when I started at Cumberland High School, our schools were not where they were right now. We didn't have people even thinking about writing a policy, or not that we knew of. Transgender people didn't have the visibility that they do now. Some of my teachers, most of my fellow students, didn't call me by my name or my pronouns as a male. If I used the men's bathroom, I either got beat up, or on one occasion, the hallway was closed off while the school's police officer on duty came and got me. The principal at Cumberland High School at the time, Alan Tornero, was really frustrated with how I was being treated, and he wanted to see me succeed, but because there was no policy, no guide, or no guide to follow on how to proceed, there was nothing that he could do. And despite his and other faculty members' support, I lasted about three months, and I wasn't really convinced that high school was going to be the best years of my life. But I am glad, however, that I went through what I did, because without it, I wouldn't have had this opportunity to make school and to make Cumberland a better place for transgender kids, because we deserve the same respect and the same privileges as our peers. For kids with unsupportive parents, school could be the only place that they're able to be themselves, so we should work to make that environment safe for them. But I'm very optimistic that with this new policy and with the combination of staff training and student body education, that Cumberland is going to become a model for other cities in Rhode Island and perhaps extend even further. So thank you for writing this policy, and thank you for hearing it tonight.
Thank you for your comments. I do remember receiving your letter with regard to your interest in having gender-neutral bathrooms, and I'm glad that the school committee is able to deliver an appropriate policy. Next item, oh, anyone else wishing to speak for or against any of the policies that we've discussed this evening? Hearing none, I will call the public hearing closed. Next item, discussion and/or vote to approve new policy. So this one this evening, Mr. Fiorello, correct me if I'm wrong, because it's a new policy, we won't be taking action on it, we will just be reading it into the record, and I believe it is, is it presently available on the district website? I think it is.
Yes.
Yeah, it is, okay. Terrific. So we will have discussion at this point, but the next school committee meeting, unless there's some activity on the committee's part to move it back to subcommittee, we would vote on it on the next meeting, which is two Thursdays from now, and that, I think, is the twenty-fourth. Anyone have any questions or comments?
I just like to.
Sure.
And I'm sure Mr. Mitchell's going to echo my thoughts. This has been a great process. We started this process back in the fall, and we really did take our time with it. Dr. Santo reviewed all the available information to really put together a nice policy, brought it to us. We talked with community members, and I know Mr. Tornero spoke, or Mr. Tornero spoke with students at the high school to get their feedback, and we had a lot of great collaboration with teachers who this would actually affect on a day-to-day basis. And I think that's one of the, actually, the best thing that's come out of this, is the teachers have become very involved in the policy subcommittee, which is just a great resource for us. And the overall collaboration between all the groups to put this policy together has been outstanding. And, you know, when you hear a story like the young man just told us, you understand the need for this policy. Perhaps if this policy was in place a couple of years ago, his high school experience would have been vastly different. And this is really about protecting the kids, giving them that safe space, and making sure that each student, regardless of what their personal situation is, has a chance to succeed in school. So I look forward to being able to pass this policy in two weeks.
Mr. Salvatore.
Yes, I want to support Mr. Fiorello's statement that he just said, and Liam, I want to, I mean, apologize, that's an awful experience that came upon you here, and it saddens me, but in the same token, I'm excited that we came out with this policy to show support, and I know your mom has been very instrumental, as well as all the other teachers, and Dr. Santo, in helping us compile this and put it together. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell.
I certainly would echo what Mr. Salvatore and Mr. Fiorello have just said, and I think the thing that has been most impressive to me about this whole process that we've been going through, and Mr. Denon is on the policy subcommittee as well, and other school committee members have attended. school committee members have attended, Mr. Duffy attended the most recent meeting, but there have been, I think there's been really nice representation from the school community, you know, certainly, school committee members, parents, teachers, students. Mr. Fiorello and I were talking earlier about, this is really the way that it should be, you know, a really nice collaboration between all interested parties, and it was just really nice, respectful process, and, and I think Liam, you know, stated it, why we need to have this policy in place, so thank you for that. But I, I just want to thank, and I know there are several people here who have been a part of developing this process, this policy, and I want to, I want to thank you for helping us with this, because I'm not so sure that we would have ended up with the product that we have without your input, so thank, thank you all.
Anyone else? All right. So, moving on, we have new business. Discussion and/or vote to approve, boy, it's policy night, Mr. Fiorello, we have no action on student suspension, but there, are you moving passage of I-16?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so.
I'm motioning approve I-16.
And that's the high school athletic and extracurricular eligibility requirements.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dunning. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
None.
Those opposed? And that motion carries six-zero. Next item on the agenda is discussion and/or vote to approve Resolution SCPR-3, 2016-03, science kits purchase.
Madam Chair, that came in front of fiscal tonight. The school district, the superintendent's office, assistant superintendent's office would like to go out and, instead of leasing our science kits at the schools to purchase them, it's not budgeted for this year, they're going to look at ways to fund it for this year and make the purchases. What they're going, right now, we're doing two out of three standards, this one would purchase the third standard that we need to compete with the testing, and they would, teachers, we get professional development as well next year on this third kit, and it got approved upstairs three to zero by finance, the Senate, to the full committee, and Mr. Pignano will identify where they will find the funds to pay for this, to buy the kits now and get them in our hands. So, I would move passage.
Mr. Demonic moves passage of Resolution SCPR-3, 2016-03. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries six-zero. Mr. Demonic.
Madam Chair, the next item that came in front of finance was SCPR-3, 2016-04. It's a resolution to award to ENE Systems of Canton for energy management improvements at Ashton School, Community School, and Garvin School, the work. They originally had a bid from us to do work at these schools, updating the 1990 technology. They have now come back and identified, Mr. Pignano had a list of each room of what needed to be done, it's a, being awarded to, like I say, ENE, they are the provider of what we currently have in there, and it proved, it got approved upstairs three to zero, and I move passage.
Mr. Demonic moves passage of SCPR-3, 2016-04. Do you have a second?
Madam Chair, second for discussion.
And we are in discussion, yes, thank you, Mr. Salvatore.
I'm sorry, Mr. Demonic, what was the amount approved on that amount?
The amount was twenty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. It is budgeted in this year's facilities budget for the work to be done. Originally, Wayne Alexander from Sedesco thought we could do most of the work, but our electrician, who had become injured or sick, wasn't around to help do the work, and so they want to try to get the work done as timely as Paul, as possible, so they've turned to the vendor to really extend his contract, another one, another twenty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars.
So, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Mr. Duffy.
So, this didn't go out for bid?
This did not go for bid.
Is, I guess my question on this is, if we had an in-house electrician that could have done it at Sedexo that couldn't do it, obviously, this isn't something I would believe is proprietary, that this group would have to do it, and I believe it should have gone out for bid. This is now the second time this group has gotten work after they won the initial bid without it going out to bid, and I have a problem with that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, maybe is Alex here? Maybe he can explain it a little bit clearer for the, for the board members in regards to the work being done?
If you could come up to the microphone, it's right over here. Thank you. Nice try.
Yeah, ENE is the vendor that we're using to do control systems in the district. It doesn't, it really doesn't make sense to have anyone else do them. We're going to try to do a lot of this work in-house, but Mr. Demonic mentioned our electrician was injured and not on the job somewhere else, but he was out for some time, and when he came back, he was working on a lot of the different heating ventilators and stuff that constantly break during the school year, and we just haven't gotten around to this. It'd be something we'd like to get done and off our list, so they have those three schools up and running, rather than try to, every, you know, whenever we have time, you know, try to pick off some of, some of the things that, that are wrong. These are, these are all, these, a lot of these are connections and things that, we, as you know, these systems were put in in the 90s and let get into disrepair, they were never maintained or whatever, we found them, we've, we've got them up and running, but there were some pieces and parts that needed to be repaired and stuff. Now, I think a lot of that is going to have to be ENE pots and that type of stuff, and that, that price includes their pots or whatever. We would have bought the pots from them, and we could have, we could do the work ourselves, but it, it just doesn't make sense to go with anyone else, I mean.
How do we know it doesn't make sense to go with anybody else if we didn't put it out for bid? This is the second time this has happened with this group, they get the initial bid, and we, this is another twenty thousand dollars we're giving them without seeing, can't be done cheaper. If our in-house electrician could do it, I could assume that we could hire virtually any electrician to do this. I'm not saying that they wouldn't come in with the lowest bid, but we don't know because we're not going out to bid. And again, this is the second time this happened, and it's, it's troubling to me that we, we're spending another twenty thousand dollars without going out to bid.
Originally, they were going to do all the work, and we said, no, don't, we'll try to do it ourselves.
But when you put out the initial bid that they got, this work wasn't included, and neither was the previous work that we discussed a few months ago.
We'll do it in-house.
No, I, I'm not, Alex, what I'm trying to say is, if we're going to spend twenty, Alex, if we're going to spend twenty thousand dollars, put it out for bid, is what I'm saying, or in the initial bid, they should say there's going to be other incremental work, so that others can have the ability to bid that. It's not a discussion whether it should be in-house or out-of-house. To me, I think that just because somebody wins one bid doesn't mean they continue to get that work over and over. That's my only point on this.
We'll put it out to bid.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm sorry. So, Alex, you don't want us to vote on this tonight, is that what you're saying? Alex, I'm not saying that they're not fabulous and they're not great, but what I'm saying is, is if we're spending the taxpayers' money, we have an obligation to put stuff out for bid, that's my point, and that we just can't continue to give away these contracts when they get the first one. That's my only point on this, and we don't.
Mr. Salvatore.
I, Madam Chair, I have to agree with Mr. Duffy, and I, I understand where you're coming from. It's, it's not a matter of if they can do it or they cannot do it, it's a matter of we're not getting a proper bid to see if we're cheaper. A licensed master electrician could capably, you know, take care of any type of situation electronically, electrically, that comes up, so I agree, I think it should have went out to bid.
Mr. Demonic.
Madam Chair, it got approved upstairs three to zero, I can see Mr. Duffy's point, but ENE has already done these three schools. They are going to be doing the other two elementary schools that we awarded the bid to, and they were the bidder that we, that the district selected to do McCourt Middle School and North Cumberland Middle School this summer, so they've already provided bid documents for that work as well. It's, I can see Mr. Pignano's point, we stick with the vendor that's working for us right now, he's done three schools, going to do two more, and then two more this summer, that's five schools, I mean, you know, we need to stay where we're.
We've got so many problems with the high school control systems, where bidders who've done this work didn't do it correctly, we've got Connecticut Controls in, they're not really getting, you know, that's a vendor that Sedexo brought in to try to correct some of the original problems, we're at a point where we're not really making any progress there. The only vendor we've had any, any luck with is ENE, and I don't know if ENE will sell items that may be proprietary to the system, they would give them to us to put in, I don't know if they'll give them to another vendor, but we'll see.
Mr. Duffy.
So, Alex, let me just, if, if this went out to bid, and this group came in and they were 10% higher, and you could make that point to me or to the group that says, listen, they are 10% more, but they're a known commodity, and we know that they do good work, and because of that, we're going to get more bang for our buck, then that's a different story, but we don't know that that's the case, that's my point. I'm okay with spending more, sometimes you get what you pay for, but we don't know that just because we haven't gone out to bid, that's my only point. I don't mind paying more if we have to at times.
Can I ask a question about the original bid? So, the original bid was inclusive of the work that we're approving today? Is, is that correct, or am I misunderstanding?
The, the original work, because there were systems in place, the original work to get three schools up and running was about ninety-three thousand dollars. It was more, but we said, gee, some of these things, we'll try to do in-house if we can. Some of the things we have done, you know, as a matter of point-to-point connections, that type of stuff.
Let me stop you there. So, the three schools are two of those schools in the Ashton Community Garvin, are those the three schools?
Yes.
So, we then declined moving forward with the bid because we said.
Well.
Okay, finish your story then.
We spent ninety-three thousand dollars to have them do initial work, though those systems in a school those size rough, would run roughly a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, but because a lot of it was already there from the 90s, you know, I don't know why they stopped paying maintenance in the 90s, I don't know what happened, but a lot of, a lot of the, you know, the skeleton of the systems were there, and so it got us, it was ninety-three thousand dollars to get those three running, rather than if there had been nothing there, would have been maybe three hundred thousand dollars. So, in order to try to, you know, keep the costs down, we thought some of this work we could do in-house. We have done some of it, not all of it. It, it just makes sense to, to get this up and running out, to just bring ENE in, who was going to do it originally, and just have them finish the work, so it'll be done.
I understand that, but when we originally went out to bid, it was inclusive of the work we're approving today?
Yeah, well, we would have had, we would have had prices on that, right.
We then, we then said, after the bids went out, we're going to scale it back a little bit?
Well, we didn't know, we didn't know what we would find. I mean, we could have been lucky and put the front end of a system on, and everything worked perfectly, right?
Yep.
But we didn't know that. So, there's, there's an hourly price that they've given us in their maintenance contracts and that type of stuff to do this type of work for us.
Yep.
So, I mean, we have that, we, you know, we have that price, we've, you know.
I, I just wanted to clarify that, and I appreciate your taking the time to do that.
There's no, because, you know, they gave us an hourly price to do the work, not a price of what it would cost, because we didn't know what we would find.
I understand. Mr. Salvatore.
Does, does the town have electricians that we could, that we could use? I mean, if our electrician could do it, I don't know if the town has electricians. I know we've used town electricians before, correct?
I don't, not that I ever remember, I don't know if they have one or not, I honestly don't know.
Yeah, I don't believe the town has any electricians, actually, you know, fully licensed electricians.
Thank you.
Mr. Duffy.
So, the reason why I'm, is it sticking in my craw on this, it's twenty-one thousand dollars, is because it was just in January that we gave this same group SCPR-1, 2016-01, was at two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars, which wasn't put out to bid.
That was to do the other two, that was to do the other two elementary schools that had no systems in them at all.
I, I understand that, I'm not saying that the work didn't need to be done, but this was that same vendor that also didn't go out to bid. That's why when I see this name come up again, when I brought that point up back in January, it came before us again, to this same group again, that they were given work when they didn't go out to bid, when I put a stink up about it in January. That's why I'm bringing it up again with this twenty-one thousand dollar bill, and I'll leave it at that.
They're doing the energy control systems in the district, so, I mean, you want Honeywell to do one, and, you know, ENE syst, I mean, yeah, we want to have some continuity and some.
I want when something goes out to bid, it's an accurate bid, and we don't spend another two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars off to that, which wasn't put out to bid, another twenty thousand dollars off to that.
There wasn't another two-hundred, that, those, those were two schools that had no systems, that we wanted to put systems in, so that we have energy control systems in all our schools. McCourt and North Cumberland, under the five million dollar health and safety project we're doing, part of those ventilator project will be getting energy control systems in the two middle schools. You've got the three schools that we now want to spend twenty thousand to get completely finished, and the two thirty-four was for the last two elementary schools that had no systems at all.
Right, I, I understand they had no systems.
This gets every, this gets all our schools having, you know, energy.
I, I understand that, it was needed, but that two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars that we approved in January did not go out to bid. Yes, if you wanted to keep them all in the same system, I get that, then the original bid should have been that way.
And we went out to bid, we did a, we did a request for proposals where we, where we went out and, and put original bids out from, the original vendor that came to see us to do all this work actually was Siemens, and we went out to bid at that point, and ENE was the, you know, was deemed to be the most qualified and cheapest and all the rest of it. What we did is, we had them bid, you know, we gave them various items that we would want them to do, install this type of boiler, do this type of thing, and they gave us prices what their, what their labor rates would be, what their markups would be, all that type of stuff. They were the qualified bidder at that point, and we've been using them for projects as we go along. It hasn't been that they were just picked out of a phone book and used.
I don't think Mr. Duffy's insinuating that.
No, but I mean, it's like, you know, like, that we're just giving this vendor work, I mean, we, we pre-qualified them, and I'll tell you, I'm going to also ask them to take a look for us, and we'll, you know, obviously, we don't spend any money without coming to you people, at what's happening at the high school, because we can't seem to get the high school resolved, all the, all the various issues, we're having trouble even meeting with the vendor. I don't, you know, I don't know, you know, Will's, you know, Will from Sedexo has been trying to set up meetings with them, and he's had no luck. I want, I want them to take a look at what's happening here. I think it'd be great to have one vendor that you know can do the maintenance on all the buildings, and, you know, have, you know, rather than three or four different vendors maintaining our systems.
Mr. Mitchell.
Madam Chair, yes, you, Mr. Duffy, your point is well-taken, I, I think, you know, I think we know what we need to do, so we can, I think it's time for us to move on, that's just my suggestion.
Thank you. Well said. Thank you, Mr. Pignano. So, we have a motion and a second on Resolution SCPR-3, 2016-04, which is the installation and of energy control systems at Ashton Community and Garvin Elementary Schools. And so, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
One, two, so one, two, three, four, sorry, I had to count it. Four yes, two no. And, and I would say, you know, I think, as, as we write the contracts, if, as Mr. Duffy pointed out, there are the opportunities to put, and I'm not sure of the correct term, but contingencies in, where we can extend work to, to, to help alleviate the issue of not going out to bid, and in other situations, we may need to go out to bid, because we don't have that in that contract. I do respect that, it sounds like this group's working really well with the group, and unfortunately, we can't wholesalingly repair all the buildings all at once, which would be the most equitable thing to do. Thank you. Next item, update on kindergarten and grade one open registration days. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, just a, a brief overview of kindergarten registration, we had the town-wide kindergarten registration on February 23rd and 24th, and that registration actually takes place in this room, and I don't know if anyone's ever had an opportunity to see it in action. Lori Jenks, Mr. Demonic's administrative assistant, organizes that event, and it requires a, a lot of coordination, there's a lot of moving parts to that, and it's pretty interesting to actually see, see it in action. So, it was very well organized, and we, we had two-hundred-six registrations, and just to give you some context, we had one-hundred-seventy- context, we had 177 last year, so we had almost 30 more, 30 more this year than last year. And just one other, I think, important point, there are currently 57 students who are in our preschool, they'll be moving, and that number does not include those preschool students who will be moving up to kindergarten, and we're anticipating that between now and the start of school, probably the day before school starts, we'll be getting kindergarten registrations, and we're anticipating approximately 100 more. So, we're looking at right around, you know, 360, 370, right around that number.
Do they bring their potential kindergarteners as proof? Do the little kids come, or just the parents?
We did see a lot of little kindergarteners, they were adorable.
They must be so excited. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion of fiscal '17 superintendent's budget. We're going to hold off on this for now, Mr. Mitchell's putting some finishing touches on the agenda, and we expect within, between this meeting and the next meeting, we'll get some information on that, and if we do need to, we'll schedule a meeting in between. I know we're obligated to hold two hearings, and we also have a deadline to get it to the town, so we'll be attentive to that. And next item is personnel recommendations. Mrs. Vogel.
Good evening. So, I have just a few appointments for you this evening. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the following custodial appointments. Joshua Joseph, custodian nights at Community School, effective March 7th of 2016, and James Marsland Jr., custodian nights here at Cumberland High School in the Transitional Building, effective February 29th of 2016. And then I have coaches, do you want me to do those separately?
Want to do them all at once?
All at once? And then I have the following coaching requests. So, I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the following coaching appointments. McCourt softball coach, Cindy Dixon, junior varsity softball, Catherine Mottow, and boys' varsity soccer, Justin Rizendez.
Pleasure of the committee on the appointments.
Motion to approve the personnel recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Fiorello.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dunin. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Mrs. Vogel.
Thank you.
We do not have executive session this evening?
We could have school committee.
Oh, we did it again. School committee comments, school liaison reports. He doesn't have anything to say, does he?
I'm all set.
Yeah, I knew that. I wasn't going to turn around. Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dunin. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And we are adjourned. 8:25.